I think it's amazing. I think it's needed within our Waterloo community. I'm definitely on board. I'm supportive. I'm excited to see what the future holds for our Waterloo community.
It's something that, in my opinion, is 30 years past its time. The Cedar River has divided east and west for way too long. And to see these schools emerge and become unbelievably vibrant, I mean, between the educational opportunities, the sports opportunities, it's a win-win for everybody involved.
I believe the vision of this one high school, you're eliminating a lot of barriers that exist for students that are marginalized, that are from low-income households, that are from spaces where they don't see a future past Waterloo. And when we open up this world of opportunity for these students, that's equity.
Our kids want to be together. Our kids want success. They want state-of-the-art facilities, outstanding academics. I think they want fine arts that are out of this world. And I think the idea of being able to combine forces and do that, the sky's the limit for them.
They want to see new opportunities. They want to see a new, nice building. We have to give that to them. That way, they get to explore options that they're not aware of. I want to see new opportunities. I do. I want to see Waterloo, be Waterloo.
Here we are, 100 years later, doing something that has never been done in this district. And that's bringing two traditions of success together? Wow. The potential there could be amazing.
Right now, more than ever, 2024, the vision here in Waterloo is strong, to be able to merge schools together for one vision, for one goal, to continue to be a wrecking force within the Iowa State of Iowa. And again, I'm excited to see what the future holds.
So I want you to lean in, open your ears, hearts, eyes, and let's think about the future. Just imagine a healthy future for our children. While we build on the past, I tell people all the time that all of us who drove up here today, you and I have something in common, believe it or not. We all have a rearview mirror in our vehicles. Sometimes the rearview mirror can be a hindrance. That's why your windshield is larger than your rearview mirror, to see where you're going while you glance at where you came from. And let's build on the great history of the school district here in Waterloo. And let's lean in, and let's do some great things in our city. You got it? Put your dog on hands and go. Let's have a good time.
I want to thank you all, first and foremost, for allowing us the space to be with you tonight. I'm not going to be before you long, but I want to just center us on our why. Because I think there is a lot of misconceptions around why the district wants to do this. And at the center and at the heart of this are the kids. It's our students. It's our community. And when we look, like Pastor Daniel told us tonight, through the window rather than the rearview mirror, we see hope, right? We see a greater future. I was blessed with an opportunity to move away from Waterloo after graduating from East High School. I went on a full ride scholarship to you and I, and guess what, y'all? I wasn't prepared. I wasn't prepared. I wasn't ready for the world because I only knew the east side of Waterloo. I only knew, you know, the educators that were in front of me, the style that was in front of me. I only knew what I knew, and that hindered me in some ways. But I had the opportunity to go out and explore the world. And just imagine with me if we had an opportunity to introduce our babies to everyday experiences outside of traditional classroom settings. Everyday hands-on learning. I mean, all of the data shows us the impact. And right now, what stands in the way is equity. We don't have the equity right now to make sure that those students have the access. I should say access rather than equity. Is access. Access, transportation, to and from. So as we venture through this evening, I want us to remember that all of us in this space are here for the same thing, at least I hope we are. And it's for the students. Not a single person who's going to speak to you tonight has a vested interest in this project besides our young people. It doesn't benefit us in any way other than profiting our future of our young babies that reside in our communities and in our neighborhoods. So as we go forward, let's be kind, let's be respectful of one another and knowing that we all have the same goal and same mission, and we just want what's best for our babies, looking through the front window. So let's look to the future and hope for the best. I think this is Antioch's own, Margaret Phillips.
We oftentimes forget about why we're doing this, and that's our kids. We need to get their input and hear their voices. I know we make the decisions because we're a voting age and all those things, but I think some of you would be surprised at what they think about the opportunity to go to school together as far as the East High and the West High kids. Reasons why the programming we feel would be beneficial. Gina already talked about access and equity. But the bottom line is that there's always been a difference. There's always been a difference. And people have transferred from east to west and west to east, and they notice the difference. So from my own experience, the most recent was my son, who's 25 years old. When he was at East High, I got a sophomore there now. He was in advanced classes, and the opportunity came for him to take advanced classes, and where did he go?
West High.
West High. There was none offered at East. It's in the program of studies, and I won't get on my soapbox about that. But at 15, he had to drive across town. He wasn't the greatest driver, either that or Hawkeye, and West was closer. So access and equity, that's the lens I'm looking at. When I got to East High, and we were having meetings at the WCC, and I'm seeing my former West High students walking by because all of the conference rooms have glass windows, and they're waving at me, and I noticed, man, for every 10 West High kids, there's one East High kid. So we instantly changed that view. So we have more and more kids going out there, and they're getting the opportunity and enjoying the opportunity. And I know somebody else is going to talk about access as far as transportation and those things. So scheduling efficiencies, with it being in one location. Right now, we have some classes or programs, and I know that's on here as well, where at one school, there's 15 kids interested, and the other school, there's three. So once again, somebody doesn't get it, or they have to go to the other schools. This year, for once, West High kid had to come over to East. And then a sense of belonging, one of the things that people, the young people that attend the WCC, they tell us, well, I wish I didn't have to leave. I wish this was my school. Okay, the learning centers, the new configuration, 10th through 12th grade will be at the WCC Central Campus. One of the changes will be, the current East and West Hys will now be 8th and 9th grade. 6th and 7th grade will be Bunker, Carver, and Hoover. And the elementaries will remain the same. But some of the data, well, all of the data shows that those transition years are very important. So attendance rates are plummeting all over the country. And part of the research that we went through this summer at our administrative retreat talked about kids coming into school and how poor the attendance is, which then affects achievement. So for elementary, our Kinney partners had the worst attendance. Middle school, our 6th graders had the worst attendance. High school, 9th grade had the worst attendance. So this is, in other places across the country, this format has proven to be beneficial. And when we took tours at these other schools, the new structures, when we tried to get ideas and look at the things that we would want in our new school, when we walked the halls of Johnston, I was blown away. It looked like East or West High. Why key Northwest? Yeah, a lot of diversity. And so I know this is, I'm not going to get into the economic factors, but there is a difference. So staffing, there'll be one head principal, five associate principals, one A.D., there'll be seven counselors. But within that, there are all these programs that are right there on site. So of course, it's WCC, there'll be Expo, and all the many programs that Expo has. And then you can see all of our programming in terms of ELL, International Baccalaureate Program, Advanced Placement Program, all those. And then we have a lot of concurrent courses with Hawkeye. So those folks will be manning and dealing with the day-to-day. Also, we'll have school resource officers, kind of talked about having two in the building, a building that size. Hadn't settled on total number of campus safety monitors. I know we have three at East, and West High currently has four. And then we have support in terms of family support, student support specialists, there are other adults that really help with the day-to-day operation, a lot of instructional coaches, mentor coaches, and so forth. Okay, so the transition, I kind of talked about this a little bit, but the smaller learning centers for the 8th and 9th graders will give them more opportunities to thrive, okay? Greater transition potential. And then it says 32% of students with less than 11 credits as far as 9th graders. That's currently. 32% of those students have less than 11 credits. So we want to make improvements on that from year to year. And then 58% of those students, as we just talked about, are chronically absent, off track, graduating four years. So once again, that's the importance of getting into these kids at those transition years. All right, benefits of students who take the course at the WCC. One course, and this is past data. So if a student took one course, 96% of those were four-year graduates, compared to, unfortunately, our graduation rate of 73%. Their average daily attendance was 97.8% compared to the 90.7% for all other Waterloo community school students. And their GPA on average was 2.9 compared to a 2.2 for the non-WCC students. Okay, so some of the benefits, right now, what we're seeing, Expo moved out to the WCCX building is what it's called. It's to the west of the WCC. Those students are there, and one of the goals was to get them more access to the WCC courses. And so now they have access to those. They have scheduled right into their schedules. And so their attendance is at all-time high for students at Expo. The climate and culture is great, and Mr. Whelan isn't here, but he's the principal there. So he's where we get this information. And of course, like I said, now, transportation, location, and situation of the students limited them in terms of having a chance to take WCC classes, of courses. And now, since they're right there, they can walk right across, so they have that access. This is a statement made by a current Expo student earlier this year. Transitioning to the WCCX has given me the chance to concentrate fully on high school coursework and start planning for my future. In my previous learning environment, I often lost focus due to the unpredictable emotions and behaviors of my peers. Now I'm enrolled in a professional health class that's preparing me for the next chapter of my life. As a senior with all the necessary credits, I'll feel ready to take on what's next. I'm incredibly grateful for these life-changing opportunities. When I look at the news, and my wife criticized me for not watching the news and reading newspapers, I don't know who reads a newspaper anymore, but I see, we go to a vote, Cedar Rapids School Board okay's two new schools, and the boardroom cheers. Okay? See your halls builds a new school, and they cheer. So I just think it's time for us to galore away. And if we don't do it now, I was on a, I was a chair, me and Robert Smith, of the High School Redesign 24 years ago, when we were going to start a new school. And here we are. So I just want to be around to see the new school. And the last thing I know on the soapbox, I got different lenses. As a former coach, and I coached at East High football, basketball at West High, and it didn't matter. When we pull up to those new schools, Limar, Xavier, and they're not new anymore, but our kids were like, man, why can't we have something like that? I don't know, Dr. Smith, I don't know if you remember pulling up to Xavier. You know, kids were asking, is that a church or a school? And we were like, yeah, both. So I just think it's time. And it's not about the shiny new building. It's the opportunities that combining resources. And I know they're going to talk about how much it costs to heat and cool buildings. Well, you don't have to cool east or west because we don't have AC. But a new building climatically is going to save us money, and there's going to be a lot of efficiencies there. All right, I think that's my time. All right, I don't know who's next. Okay, so Lyle Smith, been on the board for 40 years.
Prior to 2000, the only mechanism to fund schools was levying local property tax. And that wasn't happening, especially in urban districts. So the legislature recognized that, what they called a fiscal disparity. And so they authorized a new way to fund schools, and that was through a 1% increase in sales tax. And it's in place through 2050. So we're all going to be paying that 1% additional state tax. That's going to be used, it can only be used by school districts for school buildings. So that's the sole source of money for this proposed project. So no local taxes and no new taxes. At the public meetings prior to the referendum, bond referendum, that would have raised taxes to fund the Career Center in 2016, we had lots of meetings, and there were two main messages. Number one, we want a Career Center. You're on the right track. And number two, don't raise our taxes. So doing those things simultaneously can be a challenge, but we've done that anyway. We just went slow, which is where we're at today. Now, the results, as you can see here, we have 10 brand-new elementary schools and one completely remodeled. So we're kind of done with the elementaries. Middle schools, new Carver, completely remodeled, Central, added new wings to Hoover, added significant new wing to Bunker, and West Middle is demolished. And then the high schools. So we've addressed the middle schools to some degree so far. High schools, both have new wings as well. East has the cafeteria, the practice gym, and so forth. West has the science and arts new wing. And Expo was sold and moved to McKinstry, and now moved to the Career Center. So you can see that enrollment hasn't changed much, and it's been steady the last several years. Upper minus, down, single digits. The amount we spent today of this saved money, first 24 years, is $285 million to do everything you see on the screen. In today's dollars, if you converted it, it's $520 million. So that gives you a perspective of how this bond proposal for 165 fits in. It's large, but in the total perspective, it's not as overwhelming as some feel. This plan requires comprehensive reshaping of high schools, middle schools, administrative structure. It really can't be piecemeal because it's multifaceted. So all the moving parts must be synchronized. And a lot of people working on, a number of years, on creating this. And this is the plan that everyone feels is the best use of both money and facilities. When you step back and look at this, you've got certain assets. You've got all the facilities that exist as they are. You've got the potential saved money. So the challenge was, how do we look at this in total and come up with a plan that really helps all students? The saved money will only be used for new construction. There's also another fund of money called PEPAL, Physical Plant Equipment Levy. That's normally a five-year plan. It's been extended seven. So all anticipated maintenance of all buildings is in that budget. They extended seven years, and that's a magic number because we will, if we issue the bond now, we will have consumed our bonding capacity through 2031. So seven years. So in 2031, new money becomes available from the saved plan. And even though that's a seven-year gap, when you think about it, it's not that huge because it's going to be four years. It's going to be 2028 before the new building opens. And you have to plan a year or two, start planning what the next project might be. So if funding is available in 2031, there's not that much of a gap. So why now? Well, the real reason is students need it now. But if you look at it from a financial standpoint, every year we delay is going to cost, the project's going to cost another $8.2 million. And the interest rate that we would pay, this isn't locked in, but we assume it would be 7.2 million. So really, when you look at save, the purchasing power shrinks by about $1 million each year. And then there's the general fund savings that are delayed, duplicational electives that were mentioned, IB, AP, PBDA, world languages, and sports. There's several million dollars a year that will be saved there. I already mentioned the human capital, and that also converts to the finance. The city and county social services. First of all, Waterloo collects $40 million a year from local taxpayers. The county and city together collect $110 million a year. And if you look at our dropout rate and you use national statistics to convert that to welfare costs and other costs attributable to dropouts, it's like $10 million of that $110 million that the city and the county are needing in order to support those 1,300 dropouts. So there's also an impact on other taxes as well. The goal is to reshape future success for students and community. It's designed to solve multiple weaknesses, as I mentioned, attendance, dropouts, access, and community skill level. Wouldn't it be great instead of dropouts to have more nurses and plumbers and electricians and cybersecurity experts? It complies with the public message, expand the Career Center, don't raise our taxes, equal opportunity for all students. That's a real high key. And it would be the only traditional career-integrated high school in Iowa. And then it should reduce open enrollment out. Currently, we pay $5 million a year to other school districts that our students open enroll to. So yes, the plan is bold, but it's visionary, efficient, and we feel respects both the financial capital and human capital. Thank you.
My name is Tim Moses. I'm the athletic director at East High School. And I just want to share the benefits of creating one high school, the one community, one team, one dream, right? To bring together two programs with rich traditions. And I want to give you my lens of what I was able to see growing up in Waterloo in the '70s and in the '60s. And during that time, of course, East High and West High had programs that were unmatched anywhere else in the state. East High from 1965 to 1971 had won 56 games straight. Undefeated seasons. At that same time, Waterloo West had their own legacy in West Street going on. They had won 88 dual-wrestling meets under the legendary head coach of Bob Sidney. Folks, those days and those times were unbelievable. You cannot repeat those times. But I was a little kid, so I had a front row seat. And I know you all cannot see this picture, but this is my front row seat, right? This is probably, this is my brother Jerry. He's a senior there in this picture. So this is probably 1969, 1970. I'm in the front row with my brother Ricky, and this is my front row seat. This is my lens. This is where I had a chance to see. I had a chance to see all the tradition, all the history. So you don't think that I don't believe orange and black? Of course I do. To have, to see this was unbelievable. So in 1971, Waterloo East played a football game. They were the number one team in the state, and they played Waterloo West, the number two team in the state. That hasn't happened since 1971, and it was played in front of 9,000 people at Sloane Wallace Stadium. They could not, they had to shut the, they couldn't lock people in, so they televised that game on TV. Unbelievable game. The year prior to that, my older brother Jerry here in that picture was probably arguably the most recruited player in the state of Iowa. And I'm off script, so just in case you're wondering, well, I'm way off script. But today, I was spending a little extra time sharing my story. But in this picture, my brother Jerry is holding mail. This is, this is 200, 300 letters from every school in the country. So I had, this is my front row seat. So in 1970, his senior year, they're playing Waterloo West. And West High had a great team, right? Tom Wilcox, Forrest Smith, Reese Wilson, Mr. Klein, all these guys. They're great West High football players. My brother Jerry and Reese Wilson, they were really good friends, right? And East beat West 32 to 23. And my brother Jerry told his good friend Reese Wilson, you should have wore a higher number because Jerry's number was 32. His best friend and good friend from Waterloo West, his number was 23. And they would laugh and joke about that all the time. Now, here's the story I'm going to share. Because Eric Johnson was a quarterback at West High my senior year. And we didn't play very well. We, they beat us. But here's the story that I was going to tell. Eric was a quarterback, right? I was a quarterback at East. This guy had Kerry Burke as his wide receiver, right? Kerry Burke, Iowa Hawkeye legend. Eric has Kerry Burke. I'm like, man, I wish I had Kerry Burke to throw the ball to. He throws a pass, closes like, if you've seen Michael Jordan shoot free throws with his eyes closed in a game, he threw a pass in the game, and he had his eyes closed. He just threw the ball up. And Kerry caught it and scored it. I'm just making this story up. Caught it and scored a touchdown, and he looks over at me on the sideline, runs off the field. He looks over at me, and he winks and starts laughing. That's a joke. That's just a joke. But Eric and I have been good friends ever since we were friends at grad school. So my point being, folks, the traditions of East and West in the early '70s and '60s, that, and West High, East High, that will not, that will never be created again. That was just a special moment and a special time in history. But to be able to bring those two programs together with the traditions of East and West, to my point, the next bullet, why not allow these kids today to create their own legacy? That legacy that I just shared with you, that legacy, we'll talk about that for another 50 years, right? And it's time right now to allow these kids today to create their own legacy. It creates a level playing field for all students. What do I mean by create a level playing field? What I mean by that is, is now you can allow these kids to play with their age groups. And you don't have to move these kids up that are freshmen to play on a varsity football team against 18- and 19-year-old kids. These kids are 14 years old, and we're playing these kids on a varsity game against the competition that we're playing? We're setting kids up for failure. So by allowing these kids to develop, get in the weight room, get stronger, become more mentally stronger, and things like that, we allow these kids the opportunity to grow together and be successful, successful as they continue to grow. All resources channeled to one high school. So you don't have to duplicate buses on Friday nights, and I think Jared's going to probably talk about this. But we got East High going to Des Moines. We got West going to Dubuque. You don't have to repeat those costs. You can reduce those costs and save the district money. Build feeder programs to one high school, that is so important because as you build That is so important because as you build feeder programs, I always share this story to you. Because when I was at Logan Junior High School, I knew before I got to East High, I knew where the bootleg was, I knew where the sweep was, I knew where the trap, dive, I knew the place. And Will Montgomery, who played at McKinstry, could tell you that they did the same thing at McKinstry. So by the time we got to East High, we already knew what we're supposed to do. So build feeder programs to one high school, increase participants and competitiveness of our ninth and tenth and, and J P and varsity teams. Um, I've been the A D at East High now five years and I just, and I think we're, we're getting closer. But I think one high school put us over the hump. Better facilities and equipment for all levels. Easier to find coaches for programs and more focused on ninth grade transition at high school. And again, as, as the data has already been mentioned, we're losing the ninth grade kids to dropouts at a high rate and we gotta, we gotta figure out how to stop that. And last but not least, we gotta create that Waterloo pride. And I think one high school would allow us to create that one, that Waterloo pride. And I just always, I feel like, and I say this too, that bridge has divided Waterloo for over a hundred years, right? And it's now, it's kind of conditioned us, really. That bridge has conditioned us to think that because you live on this side of the river, that you're less than. And that you live on that side of the river, that you, that you're better than the people that live on this side. And I think by going to one high school, you eliminate that. Thank you.
Hello, I am Crystal Matlock. I'm one of the newest board members. Um, I started in November. Uh, I was sworn in on November fourteenth. And then they sent me to a conference in Des Moines the next week. We had Thanksgiving brave, came back the first week in December and they told me about a one high school. Uh, I looked at Aster and I looked at Jared and I was slight, slightly confused. But I also felt like I came in at a disadvantage because I didn't know anything about it. But then we started doing our onboarding process. We started meeting with all the district leadership team members, learning about the curriculum, transportation, uh, athletics, special needs, all these different things. Started feeling a little bit better. Then we started doing these town hall meetings. Uh, we had all the town hall meetings at the different schools and I continued to learn more and more about Waterloo schools and the one high school project. So I started feeling a little bit better. Next slide, please. I started looking this as more of a comprehensive process than just about the one high school. This is literally about K through twelve. It's time for change. Those of you that know me, I've been in higher education for twenty-seven years. I worked at Werber College. I work there now. The things I did in nineteen ninety-eight, I can no longer do now. Students have changed, times have changed, kids don't learn the same. What I learned at Grant Elementary School under this awesome teacher right here, we just can't learn that same way. So it's time for change. Kids need more hands-on learning like the Career Center. We have all these different programs with I A X L and these dashboards that can, you know, uh, match up, work with our kids all the way through K through twelve. It is totally time for a change and we need to make that change now. Next slide, please. Diploma and a plan. I heard about that when I was at Cunningham. Jeff Frost talked about that. And I said, what a concept. Your plan literally starts as a kindergartner in the Waterloo Community Schools. And it follows you from each and every grade level. K five, you get the more nurturing, the foundation. Then you go to sixth grade. Things get a little bit more challenging, you know, when you go to sixth grade. Then you move on to seventh, eighth, ninth, you start developing those plans and it prepares you for high school. So you can talk about a career or if you're going to go to college, whatever that is. It's that diploma and a plan. Each one of our students can have a diploma and a plan by the time they graduate. Next slide, please. So then, as I got through this entire process, you know, June came around, it was time for us to take a vote. And I really started feeling like I had a call to action. It was time for me to act. But not was, it just wasn't for me to act. It was rest of the school board members, the district leadership, the teachers, the administrators, the community. It's time for us to make that change. It's time for us to make that change. It's the best thing for our students and the best thing for our community. So I'm calling you to action on November fifth. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I am so excited that we're going to give our students the opportunity to attend a brand-new high school. We need that. I taught at Grant Elementary Bridgeway for thirty-four years. And we have come a long, long, long way. Barbara Pepperchella, daughter of kids, it's like, if we don't take the opportunity now to do this, the price is going to keep going up higher and higher and higher. We need to get on this now. And I, um, had to give up my home here in Waterloo. Had to move to a senior living place in Cedar Falls called Malapoint. Those students who serve us our meals, they are so excited about their brand-new high school. Some of them actually came over to the Career Center. And Cedar Falls didn't like that because they had kids coming to Waterloo to take classes. Now we need to do this now. Please, please. As your former teacher, please do that for me. All right? Thank you.